We are live.
Good evening. Welcome to this special school board meeting for March 2nd, 2021. This special meeting for the consideration of the application of the Vision Academy Charter School for Innovation shall come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. During this unprecedented time, while social distancing requirements are in place, the Upper Darby School District needs to continue certain aspects of its business, which includes decisions concerning pandemic planning. For this reason, the Upper Darby School District will continue regularly scheduled school board meetings while pandemic-related restrictions imposed by Governor Wolf and any local authorities are still in place. It is the plan of the school board to hold these meetings with the minimum required departures from normal operating procedures. The Upper Darby School District School Board COVID-19 Special Operating Procedures document outlines expected departures from those normal operating procedures and the policy justifications for such departures. At the start of each board meeting held while pandemic-related restrictions are in place, the board will review the departures from normal operating procedures as well as their justifications. While social distancing requirements are in place, the Upper Darby School District School Board finds it necessary to hold virtual school board and school board committee meetings to complete required business. These virtual meetings will allow for public viewing and participation. Following practices already in place for regular meetings, all virtual school board meetings, in addition to allowing near-real-time public viewing and participation, will be recorded and the recordings made available after the meeting. In order to hold virtual school board meetings, adjustments need to be made following existing board policy. These adjustments have been outlined in the Upper Darby School District School Board COVID-19 Special Operating Procedures. Dr. McGary, can you provide detailed information about how the public can participate in tonight's meeting, sir?
Yes, given this is a special meeting on the charter school, we would ask that comments are sent to chartercomments@upperdarbstd.org. Please provide your name and address and you can leave a comment for the board before the board takes action on any item. And then you can also phone it in at 610-789-7200, extension 2000. Same process. Please leave your name and address and that you're commenting on the charter application this evening before the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McGary, and please feel free to revisit that at any point that you see fit. Roll call Board Secretary, Mr. Rogers, please.
Dr. Hague.
I am present and can hear the proceedings.
Mr. Des Noiers.
I am present and can hear the proceedings.
Mr. War Savage.
I am present and can hear the proceedings.
Mr. Neal.
I am present and can hear the proceedings.
Mrs. Dawes.
I am present and can hear the proceedings.
Mr. Fields.
I am present and I can hear the proceedings.
Mrs. Mitchell.
I'm present.
Mrs. Curry. Mr. Brown.
I'm present and I can hear the proceedings. Thank you, sir. Policy 003 allows the board to suspend policies or parts of policies when appropriate. Therefore, due to the current ongoing crisis, I make the following motions to suspend language in two of the board's policies until the next regularly scheduled meeting. Policy 006.1, which regulates attendance at meetings via electronic communications, I move to suspend the language requiring board members to be present. Specifically, the language would be, "A majority of board members shall be physically present at a board meeting when a board member attends through electronic communications." In Policy 006, which governs other requirements of board meetings, I move the suspension of language requiring that those members of the public wishing to participate be present. Specifically, the language in this section titled "Public Participation" would remove the words that read "Present at a Board Meeting." Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed, please say "I oppose" and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please say "I abstain" and state your name for the record. The motion carries. The Upper Darby School District Administration will begin with their recommendation. Dr. McGary, I think I'm turning it over to you, sir.
Yes, thank you, Board President Brown, members of the board, and the public. I'm about to go through a description matter that we do not take lightly, and I want to say that we're speaking, I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the review team. In accordance with our Policy 140 and its corresponding administrative regulation, the review team thoroughly considered the charter school applicant's application and the other documents that were admitted to the record, including letters, emails from members of the community, information gathered from the interview with Dr. Mooreing on December 9th, 2020, information gathered from the visit to the proposed facility on December 14th, 2020, and information presented during the hearings on December 22nd, 2020, January 26th, 2021, and February 24th, 2021. In considering all of the above information, the review team unanimously found that the charter school applicant has not shown or demonstrated sustainable support for the charter school plan by teachers, parents, or other community members and students, nor has the charter school applicant demonstrated the capability in terms of support or planning to provide comprehensive learning experiences to students pursuant to its charter. The review team also unanimously found that the charter school applicant's application did not include all of the information required by the charter school law or conformed to the legislative intent of the charter school law. Finally, the review team unanimously concluded that the applicant will not serve as a model for other public schools. As a result of the aforementioned deficiencies, the review team unanimously recommends that the board reject the charter school applicant's application, as further explained in the report of the review team, which has been provided to the board and has been posted on the publicly-known board docs by the district. The board has also provided a resolution in board docs and made available public that we have prepared with our recommendation for the board to consider this evening. Board President Brown, that concludes my update.
President Brown, you're on mute right now?
Thank you for letting me know that. Thank you, Dr. McGary, for your statement and your recommendation. Now we'll take comments from the board. I'm going to start and I'll be brief to allow my colleagues some time to actually comment. I wanted to just thank you, Dr. McGary, and your team. You did say that you don't take this lightly, and I know that the diligence and the care that you and your team took to thoroughly review and evaluate the application that we received. This is not our first time doing this process, but I know the painstaking process that it takes and the care that you and your team take when reviewing it and to give it an honest evaluation. So I appreciate all the time that you put in and the leadership that you showed and the diligence of the entire review team. Thank you very much for your comprehensive review for this work. Now, all of your regular work is still in place, and yet you carve out time to review this in the fashion that you did. So, you know, on behalf of the board, and I'll let the board speak for themselves, but we certainly thank you for your time and your diligence and your excellence in the care that you took in reviewing this application. Are there any other comments from the board?
Mr. Des Noiers would like to comment.
Mrs. Des Noiers, please.
I would just like to thank Dr. McGary, the other members of the administration and review team, and indeed all district employees who worked to perform the thorough research and spent time developing the robust recommendation for the board's consideration. I do appreciate the fact that all of you spent the time needed to do this thoroughly, even though you have a number of other pressing concerns related to the school district. Thank you very much.
Is there another comment from the board, Ms. Buford?
Yes, Mr. War Savage would like to comment.
Okay, Mr. War Savage, I just, before you begin, I just wanted to also thank the public. We received a lot of comments from the public, and it's clear that we have a lot of people that care about the district and the schools and the students in our realm, and they, you know, the detailed comments showed that they thoroughly reviewed the application as well. So I just wanted to thank the public as well. Mr. War Savage, please proceed, sir.
Thank you, President Brown. You literally took the words right out of my mouth because while I certainly do appreciate all the work that went into both sides of the issue in consideration of the charter application, I was most impressed by the engagement of the community, again, on both sides, because it is so important as stewards of your public educational experience that we act as carefully and judicious as possible, because this affects lives, it affects futures. And we do, in this district, have a saying, it's unity, opportunity, unity, and excellence. And we have a very high bar, a very high standard to meet, and that definitely went into consideration when looking at this particular charter application.
Thank you very much, Mr. War Savage. Ms. Buford?
I don't see any other board members wanting to comment at this time.
Okay, thank you. Are there any comments?
Oh, I'm sorry. Dr. Hague just raised her hand.
Sorry, I apologize. Dr. Hague, please proceed.
I apologize to both Ms. Buford and Mr. Brown. I thought I had hit the raised hand, and I had not. I just wanted to add that, so I want to echo what all of the other directors have said, that we appreciate how much work the administration has put in on this. We really appreciate how deeply and thoroughly the public has engaged. I want to clarify and make sure the members of the public know that even though not every public comment was read out loud at previous meetings, we did, as directors, read them all, and we really appreciate that engagement. And the last thing that I wanted to add was to just clarify to everyone that though we very much support and appreciate the work of the administration, I don't think that any of us on the board consider ourselves rubber stampers. And so we have read these materials, we've listened to these presentations very carefully, in that when we make these decisions tonight, we are making them with informed and open minds, and that the administration is not thinking for us here. We've had a lot of time to look into this information, to learn about the law, and to read about the applicant. And I feel very confident that we're making a very informed opinion tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Hague. I appreciate you mentioning it. That's very important. Ms. Buford, are there any comments from the board?
Craig Rogers would like to comment.
Certainly. Mr. Rogers, please.
President Brown, I'd just like to, for the record of attendance, state that Gina Curry has joined the meeting, and I just want to ask that she state that she is present so we can put that on record.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rogers. My name is Gina Curry, and I'm present, and I can hear the proceedings. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Are there any other comments from the board?
No, sir. There are no more comments from the board at this time.
Thank you, Mrs. Buford. Are there any comments from the public?
Yes, there are.
Please proceed with that, Mrs. Buford. Thank you. How are we handling that tonight? Are we reading the comments from the public?
Yes, we are reading comments as they were received as of February 24th.
Thank you. Please proceed at your discretion.
The first comment is from Brianna Goldsboro, located at 8433 West Chester Pike in Upper Darby. Comment was received on the 25th at 7:43 a.m. via email. The comment reads, "Here are a few questions. When will the school open ideally? Where will the school be located? What is the academic difference between this school and public schools? Will students need to wear uniform? How will students be selected to attend? Will Upper Darby transportation be available? Are there free before and after care options? What are the COVID restrictions for this school? What are the academic requirements of the staff and teachers?" End of comment. Our next comment is from Jessica Conley, located at 4017 Ellendale Road in Drexel Hill. The comment was received on the 2nd of March at 1:30 p.m. via email. The comment reads, "Thank you for taking the time to read this. I have written before with concerns about opening this charter school in Upper Darby. I still have more concerns." comments.[1497.35][1497.35]/comments. "The district prides itself on equity. From what I read in the charter application, this is not an example. There is not a special education program for this school. That concerns me. Another issue is that when listening to the last hearing, a petition was signed by members of the Upper Darby community. I would like to know what sections of the township this was done. As a resident, I was not asked, and I walked to different neighbors' houses on my street and friends throughout the district, and they were also not asked. The petitions are not a fair representation of the opinions of many district families. It is likely targeted those who may not be as informed in what charter schools are all about. I worked in a charter school for over 11 years before coming to this district. From a teacher's perspective, while I loved my students, they were not for the students but for the money." End of comment. Our next comment is from Emily Conley, a student. The comment was received on the 2nd at 1:30 p.m. via email. Comment reads, "Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to write to you. My name is Emily Conley, and I am a 7th grade student at Drexel Hill Middle School. I have been in the district since I was in kindergarten. I watched the last charter school application hearing with my mom last week. While there was the short recess, my mom and I were discussing whether or not there was the need for a charter school in our district. From a student's perspective, the answer is 'no' in caps. We have a great district. Our students and administrators go above and beyond for us. Look at what happened last year. One day, we were in school, and then all of a sudden, we were doing assignments through Schoology. As a student, I feel that the money that would be put into the charter school would be better put to good use in our schools. Some of the bathrooms need updating. I ask that you vote 'no' in caps for the charter application. One last thing. My mom always taught me manners, and I believe that even though the man is a lawyer, I did not like the way he spoke to Dr. McGary, Mr. Marshalek, and the woman who was running the hearing. That is not a positive way to bring someone to your side. Please think of the students in the district. If this company feels that this district is not good enough for the kids and that there is a need, then he clearly has not spent a day in one of our schools or had children in the district. I appreciate all that you do. End of comment." The next comment is from Chandra Johnson, located at 7412 Miller Avenue in Upper Darby. The comment was received on the 2nd of this month at 1:40 p.m. via email. The comment reads, "I am in full support of charter school in Upper Darby School District." End of comment. The next comment is from Nolene Frey, located at 135 Terrace Avenue in Upper Darby. The comment was received today at 2:01 p.m. via email. The comment reads, "I am asking the district administration to deny recommendation for this charter school. Please consider our children's needs in your review. I have been a law-abiding, taxpaying citizen in this county for almost 20 years. Please focus on investing our resources and funding to improve our current public school system. My son struggled with developmental delays as a young child. The private school he was attending was not able to help him. I enrolled him in the Upper Darby School District, and they were able to provide the help he needed. He is currently doing well at West Chester University. Please do not allow these charter schools to invade our small school district and take away much-needed funding to support their billboards and media advertising. Thank you." End of comment. Our next comment is from Sahida Mayfield, located at 249 Locara Drive in Lansdowne. The comment was received on the 2nd of March at 3:59 p.m. via email. The comment reads, "As a former teacher of vision, I am aware of the culture of vision. It is unprofessional, disorganized, and dishonest. I believe the last three meetings are a clarification of these descriptions of vision to be true. Vision and Upper Darby School District have spoken, and I'm confident that the school district will make the right decision for our community, and that is not to allow Vision to go forward with their application. I want to thank our school district leader, Dr. McGary, and the Upper Darby staff and community for continuing to come together and support our students." End of comment. Our next comment is from Christopher Culp, located at 930 Fairfax Road in Drexel Hill. The comment was received on March 2nd at 4:56 p.m. via email. The comment begins, "Please deny this application." No, in caps, to 'No' in caps, to diverting district resources to an outside entity. 'Yes' in caps, to keeping our funds where they belong in our district for our students and families." End of comment. Our final comment is from Cynthia Wilson, located at 930 Fairfax Road in Drexel Hill. The comment was received on March 2 at 4:59 p.m. via email. The comment reads, "Please keep the money in our schools. I urge you to deny the Vision Academy Charter School of Innovation application. Thank you." End of comment. President Brown, that concludes our comments for this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Buford. Thank you for reading those comments at this meeting and handling all of the communications for our board meetings. It's a lot of coordination, a lot of work that goes, that takes place behind the scenes, and you lead all that, so I just wanted to thank you for that. The public just sees the finished product, and it runs really smoothly, but thank you for all your hard work. You make that happen.
Thank you. Thank you, President Brown. I want to thank my team because I can't do it without Jason Taylor and Bernadette Van Horn. So I appreciate them. They are the wind beneath my wings.
Awesome. Thank you, Cynthia Anthony, for always sending me the emails, letting me know who's going to be at these meetings. All right. The district's charter school review team has made a recommendation to reject the application and has provided a proposed board resolution consistent with that recommendation for the board's consideration. That resolution also authorizes the board solicitor to prepare a written notice of the board's decision. Such notice to be consistent with the record of the proceedings and the recommendation of the review team relative to the application of the Vision Academy Charter School of Innovation within 10 days of the board's action on the resolution. Such notice shall provide the reasons for the denial, including a description of the deficiencies in the application. It should be noted that this resolution is to disapprove of and reject the application. So any school board director who does not approve this resolution is therefore voting to accept and approve the charter school application. The charter school review team's recommended resolution to reject the application of the Vision Academy Charter School of Innovation is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption. Do I have a second?
Second. This is Director War Savage.
Thank you, sir. All those in favor, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
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 Aye. President Brown, I thought we were doing a roll call vote for this.
We are not.
We're not, okay.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying "I oppose" and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying "I abstain" and state your name for the record. The motion carries. A motion is in order for the adjournment of the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The meeting is hereby adjourned. Have a good evening.
Good evening.
Good night.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.